Turning to my watch, it is now 5:01. And I want to welcome you to this special July 29th meeting of the Escambia County School Board. Whether you're joining us via live stream or in the audience, we appreciate your interest in the education of the students of Escambia County. I want to remind all of you to please turn off your electronic devices if you would like to speak in the public forums section. Forms are available at the back of the room and you can bring them forward to Ms. Dwellie at the front table. This meeting was properly advertised in the Pensacola News Journal on June 16th, 2021. All right, at this time, I'd like to ask everyone to please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. At this time, we would like to move to the adoption of the agenda, Mr. Superintendent. Are there any changes or deletions to your recommended agenda?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. We do have two items that have been added. The first is an agreement between the School Board of Escambia County, Florida and the Escambia County, Florida Sheriff's Office for the School Resource Officer Program. The second, agreement between the School Board of Escambia County, Florida and the City of Pensacola Police Department for the School Resource Officer Program.
Thank you, sir. I want to make sure that everybody is aware, I think you probably got a phone call today from, or a text or email, email about the addition of these. And the Superintendent and I discussed this and we came to the opinion that because of the School Safety Act, we have to have this in place on the first day of school. So that's the reason it's being added at such a late time. So schools, state statutes and school board rules require that change is made to the agenda after publication to be based on a finding of good cause determined by the person designated to preside over the meeting and stated in the record. I do find that these are needed in our agenda. Is there any objection by any board member to this addition?
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I am not going to object to this being added, but I do want to be on the record. I had a conversation with Ms. Odom. These were not advertised until today, this morning. Our citizens did not have the opportunity to have any information about these being put forth today. And these are expenditures of funds. I realize that both of these contracts, we've had these, we have to approve them every year. But I want to be on the record as saying that I hope that this is not a new pattern forming, that we are getting information at the last moment. This, in my mind, is not an emergency issue because we know we're going to have a contract with the Sheriff's Department and the Police Department every year. And so I'm not here to place blame, I just want to say that I realize school starts next week, two weeks. But I hope that in the future, we will not see something added this late.
I think it's very fair, though, to make sure it's understood. It's not the school board, school district, that is causing the lateness of the adding of this, but the people that we are working with, we're not willing to adjust their calendars and get this to us in a timely fashion. And there are some very important issues that were not resolved, that we will still be meeting and working with them to bring an addendum probably to this particular contract. But we have to have security, safety and for our students, starting the first day of school. And I want to make sure that the city and the county have plenty of time to make sure that they are meeting their responsibilities. I don't have any problem thinking that we will meet our responsibility, our people are ready to go. But there are some issues with the city and the county for them to align people and place them in schools. Mr. Superintendent, do you have anything you want to add to this?
Well, this contract certainly is very important and we appreciate the partnership with the Sheriff's Office and the Pensacola Police Department to provide school resource officers. It's a vital service. We did have a meeting, Ms. Payne and I, Ms. Payne, I think what, it was a few weeks ago, I believe, that we did have a meeting, certainly much later than we would have liked for that meeting to happen. But we did have some concerns with the contract and we're going to move forward as best we can. And hopefully, as we continue forward, we can continue to fine tune in the coming year.
Okay, yes.
I also share Patty's concerns. I had a little while to look at it just before I came to the meeting. There's some issues in there that I need to address, that I need to find out what the answers are to it. And we got to make sure this does comply with the MARY-Dugguston Act. It's not the sheriff, it's not the police chief. They all had to comply with that law. So this was a little late, I mean, I'm not going to block it again on the agenda, but you know, I have concerns. I know we're going to try to pass something, just to pass it, to make changes later. But if they don't cooperate, there's an outlet for us. It's called the Governor's Office and it's called the Education Commissioner, okay? So we got to have a good guy with a gun to stop a bad guy with a gun in the schools. So I saw some of these date notifications, how long before they have to notify us that they're not going to be a deputy there and blah, blah, blah. So I've got some questions till we get to that agenda part, section.
Do I have a motion to adopt the agenda as amended for good cause at this meeting?
So moved.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Thank you. Any other discussion?
Yes, sir. You did say that the attorney has said that this is legal for us to go forward in this method or manner, the timeline and everything.
Man of attorney?
With regard to these two contracts? Yes. The original advertisement that was posted in June had a specific notice that said that additional items can be added to the agenda upon a showing of good cause.
Thank you. Any other discussion? If not, please vote.
Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you very much. All right, at this time, Mr. Superintendent, I'll turn it over to you for a presentation by finance.
Yes, we have the finance for the tentative budget, the finance report for the tentative budget. I'm going to turn that over to Mr. St. Seer for his presentation.
Okay, thank you, sir. The tentative budget hearing is the step we're at now in the trend process. We advertise the bud, this budget that you will see in the Pensacola News Journal on Tuesday. We're on day two, which is part of the trend process. From two to five days after advertisement, we're to have a tentative budget hearing. So Ms. McCants will lead us through that entirely. She has put in an enormous amount of work in this, just want to recognize her for that. So Ms. McCants, if you would.
Thank you, Ms. McCants.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Like Mr. St. Seer said, we have advertised it accordingly as required in the News Journal. And now this meeting is to adopt a tentative budget and tentative millage rate. Before I get into the presentation of the actual budget, there is a handout. And I'm going to go over that first. This is some supplemental budget information. There are several spreadsheets. There's two pages with department budgets, two with projects, and the last spreadsheet, we're going to go over some general fund salary budgets. Okay, the first page, which will be the first two pages, are department budgets. Each department received their budget and were told to, for their, to ask for their requests and return it back to budgeting. And also during this process, they were asked to reduce their budget by 3% if possible for the new year. The first two pages will show you the original budget for 2021. The second column is the tentative budget for the '22 fiscal year, the change between the two fiscal years, and the dollar amount change from 2021. If you take a look at each call center, most call centers did reduce their budget. So they did a really good job going through each item, line item by object function, and trying to find items that they could reduce their budget. And that second page of their department budget shows a savings of $185,076.
Ms. McCants?
Yes.
On the first page, there's one facilities planning, it's an increase rather than a decrease?
Right. That's an increase because they have a project that they manage. And what they did, they increased the department budget and decreased their project budget.
Okay.
So it all comes under facilities and they just did a swap between the projects.
Okay, thank you.
When we receive the budgets, each department also, if they have any requests for, that are capital allowable, being any FFNE items, we go through, we take all the FFNE out of these budgets and put it in to capital. So any request that came in through these call centers, we put them to millage because they are millage eligible. And so the results that you see, for instance, we would get a lot of requests for transportation or IT, if they have any FFNE, those items have been taken out of general and put into millage. I know this is your first time seeing this spreadsheet, so we do still have time, final, it's not until September. So if there's any additional information you need about any of these budgets, please let us know. Okay, the next two pages are projects that departments are responsible for. And this is set up the same. We have each project 2021 budget. And also, we have the 2022 budget and any changes shows an increase or decrease, as well as the dollar amount. The difference between the projects and the call centers, each call center is a department, but on this, on this project spreadsheet, we also have budgets that we do give to schools. If you look at the first one, 0108, that is the depart, uh, school budgets that we allocate every year to the schools. That's their regular operating for their, each location. It shows a decrease, but we did not decrease any school's budget in the 108, that's just because it's based on FTE. They all receive the same amount per FTE.
May I ask a question? I noticed that the outsourced custodial is the same, so we did not have any increase in that contract.
At this time, no, although we are looking at one or two other sites that we may actually add at a later date. We just didn't want to change everything right before the start of school.
Mr. Chair, is that safe school allocation, that's categorical funding on it?
On this spreadsheet?
Yes.
This is not categorical.
Okay, so the safe school district cost portion?
Right. This is not the safe school allocation.
What does that go?
That is just, we use general fund portions and that is what we use to pay security costs.
Oh, security costs, okay.
Yes. If you want me to go through any of these, just let me know.
Any other?
Better review or?
Questions?
As you see on the second page with all the reductions, 3% increase in most call centers, we're down to, there's a savings of $295,746 for the new year. Of course, any project that had a contract in it, of course, we did not reduce it. As well as any school budgets, there's no reductions. Okay. We'll move on to the next spreadsheet, which is salaries. These are major general fund salaries, 0101. We have class size as well as SAI. Our current year budget, a total of 241,593,493. This shows the activity for the year of 2021. We have an increase from '21 and '22 in the 0101 salary budget. We also, if you look at 0720, you will notice a decrease, that's categorical. And that is what our allocation is for the new year. So that's why we're decreasing 0720, the class size. We're showing an increase of $4 million over actual '21. Of course, there's an increase in benefits for health and retirement. We're expecting an increase, so we're estimating $2 million. And also, we'll receive vacancies, that $2 million, we're budgeting for positions that weren't filled, but we still budget for them in case they're unfilled.
Mr. Chair, may I?
Yes, ma'am.
So the vacancies that are budgeted, are these the ones that are reflected in the personal planning document, or are these additional ones?
These are all positions in the, in the personal planning document.
Well, in the document itself, it'll have an asterisk and said, "This position being held open." So is, is that a different vacancy than the ones that are reflected here?
It's different because if it's held open, then we're just holding it. We don't plan to fill it.
But you don't budget for it?
Right. These are positions that we trying to fill, have not filled.
Okay.
This is only, we're only budgeting a portion of the allocated authorized positions. I don't remember what percentage, but we, we went through and budgeted a portion of authorized positions that were unfilled. We know we'll never fill 100% of our positions, so we don't budget 100% of our positions. They'll think we're over padding the appropriations if we did that, and we would be. So we take a reasonable percentage of those positions, and this number will probably change between now and final, and, and budget a portion of them just to have some budget capacity in case we hire some of those positions back. And one of those examples would be bus drivers. They're, they're in this too. So just figure a few bus drivers filling, that we haven't filled. We plan to fill those, so we budget them, some of them, with, you know. So that's really the issue here. It is not, it is not, every position is not budgeted. Every position that's authorized is not budgeted because we know we'll never fill all of them. So we don't appropriate all of that. Does that make sense? If we have 100 positions open, if we have 100 positions open right now?
I understand what you're saying. I don't know whether everybody else does. I understand what you're saying. My question was basically, are these positions we want to fill? Yes. As opposed to those that are sometimes just decided that we will leave them vacant for this year?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay. Any more questions in reference to this handout?
I think not.
The tentative budget document has been linked. The first 29 pages is the district summary budget, which is the template that we received from the state. Well, we have budget for each fund. And what I'm going to do is go over sort of supplemental information, which starts on page 30.
I, I got one quick question as you move through that. There are several pages that are there without any funds in them. So would you explain that? I think I understand what they're, but you know, that they're there because it's going to be money that's going to hopefully come in. But I just wanted to make sure that we, we talked about that because there's no funds on those pages.
Right. There are some that will not have any numbers because we don't have them, like permanent funds. There's, there's a few pages-
I think most of these are federal.
-that we will not have, but there are new pages due to the CARES Act that will have funds. And when we bring the final, we will budget more of those.
Okay.
This shows each fund with the graph, it shows the percentage by fund. If you could see the general fund, 364.9 million. Food services, 27.7 million. We have federal programs, that's not food service or CARES Act, 43.9 million. We have the ESER, which this, some of these numbers were changed because when putting this together, year end had not ended. But at the time, we're projecting, we're going to have 871,000 left to budget out of the 12.3 million allocation we received for ESER 1. Okay, the CARES, the other special revenue, that's our gear funds and other small grants that we received. That was a total, for the gear, we received 1.1 million. And we're projecting 170,000 that would carry over. This one ends August 31st. We did budget a portion of ESER 2 and tentative, 34.4 million. And we will have this grant through September of 2023. We have our debt service fund, 18.6 million. We have all our capital project funds, 172.9 million, which is our sales tax, millage, CONDS funds. That gives us a total governmental fund of 663,784,970.47. We have our internal service funds, which are employee benefit funds, and our risk management funds of 61,654,68.7. That brings us a total for our tentative budget of 725,439,038.54. Okay, page 31. This gives a breakdown of our general fund revenue estimates, federal and federal through state, 3.5. Our state funds, which is our FEFP, class size and other smaller allocations, 202.2 million. Our property tax revenue, 99.1 million. And other local funds, 4.7 million. And other local, that's funds we receive local, mostly rent, a lot of Georgetown fees we post to this other local childcare fees. That brings us for total revenue of 309,582,596.09. We include the transfers in, of 8,483,232. Transfers in, that's our insurance. We're able to transfer cash from millage to general fund to cover insurance premiums as well as maintenance expenditures. We have an estimated beginning fund balance at July 1 of 46,894,585.17. Page 32, this gives a general fund budget breakdown by object. Of course, salaries and benefits, being salaries and benefits being the largest part of our budget. Salaries, 197,262,920.65. Benefits of 63,342,022.69. Purchased services, 30,889,225.15. Energy services, 11,9584. Materials and supplies, 11,131,488.66. Capital outlay, 2,382,310.91. And just to mention capital outlay, I know when people see that, they think about other capital funds, but we actually, this is any expenditure that we will code to a sixth object. And we do have certain projects in a general fund where we do purchase equipment, because we have certain allocations like K turn around, those are in a general fund, so we do purchase equipment in general fund for those projects. We have other expenditures of 7,60,853.45. We have ending fund balance estimate of 41, 41,801,007.75. Okay, page 33 and 34 is our certification of school taxable value, which I did go over this last week. But I just want to reiterate, a couple of numbers on this form, again, for everyone. Line four is our taxable value. And like I said before, this first section is completed by the property appraiser. Section two at the bottom, this is where we as a district fill in our millage rates that we're projecting to levy for the new year. Line 14, you can see the state rollback rate of 3.654. 15 shows the local board rollback rate of 2.003. 16 is the required local effort for the new year of 3.695. If you go down to 17, that's our capital outlay millage rate, 1.214. Discretionary operating, .748. And the capital as well as discretionary operating for general gives a total of 1.962 If you take a look at page two, line 22 shows that we are not levying more than the rollback rate. Therefore, we do not have to advertise a tax increase. Page 35, this shows proposed millage rates and the revenue that is projected to generate based on the certified tax roll. And this is at 96%, not 100%. We have general fund required local effort, 82,432,610. Our discretionary operating at 16, 687,305. Ninety, that's a total for the general fund of 99,119,915. Our capital outlay, which is for millage, of 1.214, we generate 27,834.07. That's a total of 126,203,322. That's a total of a hundred and twenty-six million, two oh three, three two two. Page thirty-six, we show you a comparison of twenty twenty-one and twenty-one twenty-two as far as the millage rates. It comes to a total decrease of point two seven one. Also the certified tax rule. Under the twenty twenty-one, that's the final taxable value for the prior fiscal year. And compared to twenty-two, that's a change of one point four million billion increase. Okay, page thirty-seven. This gives you an example of how the millage rates levy will affect taxpayers. If you look at twenty twenty-one and twenty-one twenty-two, you can see that it is a decrease. Due to the fact that we have a decrease in millage rates that we are proposing to levy. Okay, page thirty-eight. Which gives the historical data for millage rates that the school board has levied starting from nineteen ninety-two. To the proposed twenty-one twenty-two. And as you see in the older years, if you look at the column next to the last, it's two point oh. Because two mil usually actually be two mil, that used to be the maximum we could levy, but now it's one point five is the maximum for capital outlay.
Take a look at the right, far right, that's the total mils and how much we dropped from prior year. Just to issue, uh, to levy rollback rate. We don't know how long we can keep doing that, you know, honestly, because, um. We, we may be okay from the next year or two, but, uh. With the inflation that we're experiencing and things, uh, and that millage fund that we need to do, bus drive, but school buses. Who knows, I'm, Sean, I don't know, I don't have a read on what school buses are going to wind up costing in the next couple of years with the inflation factor there. So we, we don't know if we can continue to levy, uh, rollback rate, but we'll, we'll do our best, but that'll be a lot of discussion, I'm sure, next time.
Okay. The next page, thirty-nine. Is also historical information in reference to analysis of our tax rule. If you look at the tax rule for twenty-one twenty-two, it's a six point six four increase from prior year, six four percent.
Other property.
Okay, that's the end of all the supplemental information that's in the tentative budget book. The next section are the advertisement that were advertised in the newspaper on Tuesday. Any questions on any of the advertisements?
Mister Chair, do we need to do the resolutions as part of this tentative budget?
Yes, yes, ma'am, we do.
I just wanted to make sure because it's not here, so.
The resolutions?
Yeah, they're, they're not as part of the, yeah, I just didn't want us to forget them.
All right, yes.
Because they're in the advertisements.
We do have to do the resolutions tonight.
Yes.
Any other questions?
On the agenda, yes. Thank you. Anything else, questions? All right, at this time, is there anyone here who would like to speak in public forum to the proposed tentative millage rates? And tentative budget for the Escambia County School District for the school year twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two? Okay. Seeing no one, we will move on in to motions to vote, uh, for the adoption of the tentative millage rates. So. Who would like to start?
Mister Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I move the adoption of the twenty twenty, twenty-one, twenty twenty-two tentative required local effort millage rate at three point six nine five mils.
Thank you, sir. Is there a second to this motion?
I'll second that.
Thank you very much. Is there any discussion? If not, please vote.
Motion carries five zero.
Next, someone for discretionary and operating.
Mister Chairman, I move the adoption of the twenty twenty, twenty-one, twenty twenty-two tentative discretionary operating. Millage rate at zero point seven four eight.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you very much. Any discussion? If not, please vote.
Motion carries five zero.
Next, for the local capital improvement.
Mister Chairman, I move the adoption of the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two tentative local capital improvement, in parentheses, capital outlay. Millage rate at one point two one four.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you very much. Any discussion? If not, please vote.
Motion carries five zero.
And last, the, uh, total millage.
Mister Chairman, I move the adoption of the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two tentative total millage rate at five point six five seven.
Thank you very much. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Not, please vote.
Motion carries five zero.
All right. Moving on to item five, which is the adoption of the twenty-one, twenty-two tentative budget.
Mister Chair, I move the adoption of the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two tentative general fund budget in the amount of three hundred and sixty-four million, nine hundred and sixty thousand, four hundred and thirteen dollars and twenty-six cents.
Thank you very much. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead. That's fine. Either one of us, Holly.
Take your pick, Holly. Okay. Any discussion? If not, please vote.
Motion carries five zero.
Moving on to special revenue.
Mister Chair, I move the adoption of the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two tentative special revenue food services budget in the amount of twenty-seven million, seven hundred and forty-one thousand, six hundred and sixty-five dollars.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Any discussion? If not, please vote.
Motion carries five zero.
And the next one, federal programs.
Mister Chair, I move the adoption of the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two tentative special revenue federal programs budget in the amount of forty-three million, nine hundred and seventy-four thousand, seven hundred and seventy-one dollars and nine cents.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Any questions, discussions? Please vote.
Motion carries five zero.
Next, CARES Act, ESER.
Mister Chair, I move the adoption of the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two tentative special revenue CARES Act ESER budget in the amount of eight hundred and seventy-one thousand, eight hundred and ninety-nine dollars and sixty-six cents.
Thank you. Do I have a budget? Do I have a budget? Do I have a second?
Second.
Any questions? Any discussion? Note, please vote.
Motion carries five zero.
CARES Act other.
Mister Chair, I move the adoption of the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two tentative special revenue CARES Act other budget in the amount of one hundred and seventy thousand, five hundred and nineteen dollars and sixty cents.
Thank you. Any, uh, second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? If not, please vote.
I'm sorry, could you revote, please? Dr. Adler, one.
We had to revote.
Motion carries five zero. Thank you.
Thank you. ESER two.
Mister Chair, I move the adoption of the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two tentative special revenue ESER two budget in the amount of thirty-four million, four hundred and eighteen thousand and forty dollars.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Thank you very much. Any discussion? Please vote.
Motion carries five zero.
Debt service funds.
Mister Chair, I move the adoption of the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two tentative debt service funds budget in the amount of eighteen million, six hundred and eighty-one thousand, six hundred and thirty-four dollars and three cents.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Please vote.
Motion carries five zero.
Capital project funds.
Mister Chair, I move the adoption of the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two tentative capital project funds budget in the amount of one hundred and seventy-two million, nine hundred and sixty-six thousand, twenty-seven dollars and eighty-three cents.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Please vote.
Motion carries five zero.
Internal service funds.
Mister Chair, I move the adoption of the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two tentative internal service funds budget in the amount of sixty-one million, six hundred and fifty-four thousand, sixty-eight dollars and seven cents.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Do we have any need for discussion? Please vote.
Motion carries five zero.
Let's go, the total budget.
Mister Chair, I move the adoption of the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two tentative total budget in the amount of seven hundred and twenty-five million, four hundred and thirty-nine thousand, thirty-eight dollars and fifty-four cents.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Do we have any discussion? If not, please vote.
Motion carries five zero.
Okay, next, the item, as I was talking about, the adoption of resolution. Do I have a motion for the adoption of the resolution number twenty twenty-two dash oh one?
Mister Chairman, I move the adoption of resolution number twenty twenty-two dash zero one. A resolution of the Escambia County School Board adopting the tentative millage rates for fiscal year twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? If not, please vote.
Motion carries five zero.
Next one.
Mister Chair, I move the adoption of the resolution number twenty twenty-two dash zero two. A resolution of the Escambia County School Board adopting a tentative budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? If not, please vote.
Motion carries five zero.
All right. Next, we need to move into.
We have to set the date.
Time, date, and location of the final budget meeting with the guidance from Mister Saint Seer. And.
I, I, it's on here. I move that the final budget hearing be held Thursday, September sixteenth, twenty twenty-one, at five oh one P M. In the school board chambers, room one sixty of the J E Hall Center.
Thank you very much. In case anybody didn't catch all that, September the sixteenth, five oh one P M. Location, this room, room one sixty of the J E Hall Center. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
And duo seconded. Any discussion? If not, please vote.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you. Now moving into item nine, uh, when, an agreement between the Escambia County, uh, the school board of Escambia County and the sheriff's office.
Mister Chair, I move the adoption of the agreement between the school board of Escambia County, Florida, and the Escambia County, Florida Sheriff's Office for the School Resource Officer Program as presented.
Thank you very much. Do I have a second? If not?
I'll second for discussion.
Okay. Is there any discussion?
Yes. Uh, and I, and I'm, what I'm zeroing in on is on page four of twelve. Okay, and what I want to know from the attorney, because we have to know if there's not going to be a sheriff deputy, and I'll go with the city too, or a city police officer in our schools according to state law. Okay? And I'm seeing these where they, they can notify just that morning and they're not going to be there. Does this comply with the state law of trying to get, because there's no, I mean, if something happens and we don't have a good guy there with a gun. And if it's the city police chief or the, our, our Chip Simmons of the sheriff, we're all in hot water. Okay, so that's what I want to make sure, because this was presented so quick, and I hadn't had a chance to even look it over to see about any arrest issues. But if you want to tell me if that at least complies with state law.
There's nothing in state law that specifies what needs to be contained in our contract. It's my understanding that the superintendent met with Mister Simmons and was assured that they would give us everything that we need. Um, this was one of the areas that we did attempt to get some additional language in. I, I say we, it was our safe, safety specialist. But, um. It, it's, it's definitely a gaping hole in this contract. And it would, if that were to come to pass, uh, we would be required to notify the Department of, um. That we had a lapse in our school safety coverage. And that is something that we do hope to work out with the law enforcement agencies, hopefully in very short order. But this is something that just, it, 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 for whatever reason, came up very quickly on this deadline. And we find ourselves in this position of having to have SROs in place, having to have a contract, uh, is preferable to being in complete violation and just hoping that perhaps they may show up in the absence of a contract.
Okay, and Ms. Hightower?
Um, I too was concerned with the same thing, Mister Adams, and I wanted to ask, I don't, I don't see Kyle here, but Mister Dennis, do we have a class about to start or a class started with our guardians?
We actually have a class ongoing as we speak.
How many are in that class?
We started with sixteen. I'm happy to tell you that after our initial, um, range qualifications and our night fires, we still have fifteen, which is an all-time record for us. Uh, they will be pursuing their active shooter, um, training portion, which is another kind of a calling point, uh, next week. And hopefully, we'll have a substantial number, probably one of the highest pass rates we anticipate that we've had in a while, so it's very encouraging right now.
Thank you, Mister Chairman. I just, um, I just wanted to ask that question because I believe, um, I understand that the sheriff's department and the police department, their obligation is to the citizens of this community. But as Mister Adams was speaking about, um, you know, it is on us to make sure that we have coverage every day. In fact, we were, we were, um. called out because we had people, had schools that were not covered all day, every day. And so, um, you know, if we can continue to work on this, and as, as I know, school is starting, but I know that there's language in this contract that allows us to start without it, because it says, if, when it gets approved, we go back and pay them for the time that they've already served, so to speak. Um, but, um, there was a, and this is kind of, um, okay, it comes up in the next contract. Um, but, uh, I, I do want to express the same thing, and I also want to say thank you to both the Sheriff's Department and the Police Department for working with us. Um, I know a lot of districts don't have that luxury that we do in having them support us and help us with the cost. And so I do want, I don't want to, I don't want to sound ungrateful, but, um, you know, we've got to figure out a way that we can all be happy with this, um, because it, I totally understand that if there's a an issue where they have to pull, um, I, I, and I know, um, Protection Services works hard at keeping some extra people around, so when they find that out, we get somebody, uh, hopefully there. So, I appreciate your, your comments, Mr. Adams.
Mr. Fesco, you have any comments?
I see the need for us having this contract in place. I don't know if, if we don't have the contract, if the sheriff's deputies will continue to serve and, you know, without the contract. They most certainly have been very cooperative and, and most likely would. I feel better about having the contract and making amendments in the future. And I've been very happy with our Protection Services being able to fill those gaps and, and do the things that need to do to make sure the coverage is there. So, at this point, rather than not having a contract at all, I am in favor of going forward and amending as we go into this next school year at, uh, following meetings.
I guess so. Dr. Adler, any comments? Okay, that's okay. We need something in place.
Yes, we need some documentation in place. And giving us an opportunity, uh, as Mr. Fesco said, to make some amendments. Uh, because I'm, I'm wondering what happens if we expect a deputy or officer to be there? And, and we get a call that that person is not going to be there, even though that's in the contract, what do we do then?
And that's the question we're trying to answer and work toward having a, uh, fail-safe response to that. And, uh, we have to have, I think the number one thing is that our, our principals must immediately know who to get in touch with to say, hey, I, I'm without a, a, a resource officer.
Absolutely.
And, uh, do that quickly, and may cost us a little money, but we, we have to have safety on our campuses. All right, any other discussion?
Sure.
Yes.
Yes. Uh, Mr. Dennis, are we, are you believe that we may have enough guardians to cover this? When we have a vacancy at the schools?
So we are in a position where we would love to get to a point where we have our standard two SRO sworn officers in our high schools, an SRO in every, one if not two in every middle school, and then use guardians for all of our elementaries. We do not have enough, obviously, to do that now. If we're successful with this class, right now we're down to twenty-two guardians. Realistically, we could have as many as ten succeed, which puts us to thirty-two. You can do the math. That means we could conceivably cover all of our elementaries, but that would leave us no floaters. So we're going to need at least one more class to get to a full coverage scenario. But we will be far better positioned than we've ever been before after this class.
And, Mr. Chair, um, the increase in costs, a hundred and forty thousand, is that, it's a little plus? Is that for actual, additional SROs or, or what?
There's some additional ones.
Additional ones going in there?
There's, I think, three at the, at the sheriff and there's...
That's correct.
What, what schools?
The sheriff has committed, or, uh, incorrect me if I'm wrong, Miss Payne, three additional.
There are eighteen from the sheriff and I forget how many from the police. And, but they've, they've changed the rank of their supervisors, too.
The, the, my understanding from the Sheriff's Department, there's been a request for three SROs, but that still has to go before they're forward.
Anything, Mr. Fesco, something else?
I'd like to, to make sure that we have in place somewhere in somebody's operating procedures of something that's going to alert people to start the contract procedures with enough time to finish this before we get to a point like this. So, and I don't want to find out, and I'm not wanting to point fingers or anything else, but I'd like to make sure that whether we now determine that it's going to be in this department or this person's responsibility, that there's something set up as a reminder that every May the negotiations begin for the contract to come in in a timely manner before we get to the opening of school.
Yeah.
I agree.
Um, Madam Attorney, would you, can you tell me, anywhere in the, the law, does it say how many SROs you have to have at a school?
I'm not aware of that off the top of my head. Um, I do know that they've recently come up with some modifications as far as allowing if there are joint campuses, if so, for instance, if you've got a joint, uh, middle school and elementary school, you can have one officer that covers both.
Really?
Mr. Dennis might actually be more clued into that than I am.
Because I thought that was what they dinged us on, was that we had...
By number of students, how many?
Yeah.
This is something that's more recent, so it may be that, it may be that these things developed after the audit?
Just to, to be clear, um, Ms. Hightower, what we were, the finding that we had when the Office of Safe School audited was no officer present on two schools, uh, particularly up in the north end. It was not numbers or, or some FTE count.
Right.
I will tell you that we benefit greatly by having two at the high schools, not only to serve the, the size of the populations we, we serve in those schools, but the sheriff and the PPD are very, very cooperative. If we find ourselves with a shortfall, it's not uncommon for them to move an SRO, one from the high school to an adjacent campus, maybe for an interim while someone has to go in and come back. So, their flexibility is markedly improved and they've gotten, they've been incredibly cooperative, and I think we need to recognize that, and we'll continue to negotiate.
Good, thank you. Anything else?
Just one more question. Um, Mr. Dennis, if we could not get a police officer at that school and we didn't have a guardian, do we have a private source we can go to?
Actually, what we have, one of our two safety officers in Protection Services is still a qualified guardian.
Oh, okay.
So we have our complement of guardians, plus we have a safety officer, and he does, Shannon does fill in occasionally. And he's, he's exceptional, just like all of our guardians. Um, so we have that as a fail-safe, but we actually have built in a four floater, regionalized four floater program with our guardians. Because as you can imagine, every morning at five o'clock, we're checking, who, because officers get sick, too. They have callouts. And our guys do a fantastic job of, you know, by six o'clock, they know, and we'll fire off a guardian or, or we'll contact the the lieutenants or the sergeants and they'll find us somebody, and, and they've been appreciably better than things have been in the past.
Okay. Any other questions? Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, if I could just add, um, we certainly, uh, value and appreciate, as has been expressed here, the partnership between the Sheriff's Office and the Pensacola Police Department. We are very thankful for them and, uh, we will, um, as we move through this next year, we will, uh, continue to try to improve what we have in place. And, uh, I take ownership for the, uh, the timeline here. I, I apologize for having you as a board in this position. Well, and, um, thank you for your support in whatever decision you make, and I, I know you, it, it's a difficult situation with school coming up quickly, but, um, certainly thank you for the, the, the discussion that's taken place here.
Thank you. If no more discussion, please vote.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you very much. Number ten.
Chair, I make a motion to approve the agreement between the School Board of Escambia County, Florida, and the City of Pensacola Police Department for the School Resource Officer Program as presented for the agenda.
Thank you. Do I have a second to this motion?
I'll second.
Thank you very much. Any discussion? Ma'am?
Um, I just noticed, um, in my brief time with the document, in the sheriff's, uh, contract, there is a, a, a an additional expenditure on page seven of twelve where it indicates that we will share part of the cost for our resource officers to go to the Florida Association of School Resource Officers Conference, but that is not in the police contract in the Pensacola Police Department. Are they not allowed to go to that conference or? Or do we just not support them?
I honestly wish I had an answer to that, ma'am. I'm, I'm not a hundred percent certain, but I'll certainly find out as quickly as possible.
Because I would like to, for all of our SROs to be able to attend if there's a conference and a training for them to do.
I will tell you that that language or that omission of language has never been in their contract, so my assumption would be, since the PPD has reviewed this year after year, that there's probably not something equivalent at that level, but I don't know. I'll find out for you.
Okay, any other discussion? If not, please vote.
Motion carries five zero.
Okay, thank you very much.
Mr. Chair, if I might, um, that was in the PPD officer. There is a provision under financing of the School Resource Officer Program subsection A that does say that the school board will pay fifty percent of the cost associated with their attendance at state and national conferences.
What page is that on?
It's on, um...
Because I couldn't find it.
Article, uh, four.
Article four, okay, thank you.
So you're saying they are both covered by the same language?
Okay, I just couldn't find it.
Good, okay. That's good.
It is good.
All right. So at this time, we're going to move into public forum. Uh, I have requests from three individuals. Uh, the first one is Christine Harper, and she is donating her time to James. The second one is James. But, uh, and then Mr. Ronald Jarren. Mr. Jarren is also donating three minutes to, uh, Dr. James Harper. So, Dr. Harper, you have nine minutes if you need it. If you don't, that's up to you. So, uh, if you'll come forward, and, uh, Hickey is speaking on COVID-nineteen mitigation.
Okay, um, my name is James Harper. Uh, I'm an optometrist in the area. Um, I've, uh, spoken before the board, uh, before. I'm happy to see some previous faces I have seen. I believe there are other people here, uh, I haven't seen before. But, uh, Mr. Chairman, I thank you, all, uh, members of the school board and superintendent for the welcoming, uh, spirit here today. I come before the board today in the hopes of, uh, spurring further thoughtful dis- discussion that I suspect will continue hereafter on an issue that, given a recent rise in Delta variant-fueled COVID-nineteen infections, has become more pressing. Namely, the matter of how we can assist each other in approaching COVID-nineteen mitigation measures. And the best way we can reflect the best interests of everyone in the district. I had, uh, I had described, uh, some of my credentials in the past. Um, as I say, I am a, um, optometrist in the community, uh, since my time as a resident at the Pennsylvania College of Optometry that has become Salus University many years ago, in which I was involved with teaching optometry students. I've been serving with patients, uh, I've been serving patients of all stripes, including, in my range of experience, many pediatric patients from age seven and above, uh, in Escambia County for over ten years. As a doctor of optometry, my education and training included many aspects of eye disease and systemic health. Doctor of Optometry Board exams for new optometrists routinely test for competency in systemic fields, including, uh, the fields of virology and epidemiology. As I come before the, the board today, both as a proud parent of two young students in the district and as a professional in healthcare in the community, I continue to offer and hope to act as a resource, as the board and the superintendent, I believe, are keeping the possibility of further changes in, uh, COVID-nineteen mitigation measures in mind as we all learn, uh, more about the state of affairs in this regard as the pandemic, uh, continues. So, ah, six minutes, sorry. So, since we are, uh, in a form of education, I hope the chairman and others will indulge and consider some history. Infectious disease, government healthcare measures, issues around the safety of treatments, vaccinations, are all nothing new to American public life. George Washington, in an act of reasoned leadership, conducted the first mass military inoculation. His move was unpopular to undertake for the Continental Army, but Washington did it because reason told him it was the right thing to do. The Congress and the Army ultimately followed him with general success in the effort because they were convinced they were educated to understand the risk and how it would help them accomplish their cause. This was during the revolution, and it helped, um, to ensure that the, the troops were, were ready and able to, um, fight and achieve their cause. Although science today, over time, has greatly improved, the basic paradigm of, of, uh, major infectious disease is similar to what it was centuries and decades ago. Obviously, to some extent, it is a personal problem of many individuals when you have a lot of people, um, contracting a disease, but ultimately, it is, in essence, a problem of public health for all. The conclusion today seems inescapable, that COVID-nineteen must be stopped by the people acting in unity. Mass health measures, mass vaccinations, they continue to be in our future with regard to this pandemic. We're not, we're not quite there yet. Because of issues, I think, of, you know, requiring the full FDA, um, authorization of the COVID-nineteen vaccines. But, when we think about it, smallpox, polio, mumps, measles, they were all defeated by mass vaccination. And they were facilitated by school districts. So I think, I think we have to consider, you know, that's coming towards our future and how, you know, what policies we, we look at right now have to align with a future that I think we're coming to. So, currently, as we start the new school year, several, uh, organizations have given public health guidance. health guidance to look at returning to a high degree of masking in indoor spaces to mitigate the effects of COVID-19. So, as we consider that policy, I wanted to just, you know, with the short time I have, ask you to consider that if we start the school year with such policies that essentially send the message, totally optional masking, the message, you know, that I think comes across is, you know, the pandemic is over or it isn't or never was a big deal. And that's a problem in the short term in terms of control of the virus, and I have multiple studies to show the effectiveness of mask wearing and not just the effectiveness of it, but the very high likelihood that we are going to greatly help the spread of a much more transmissible virus with policies that are too lax. And if we're starting with that kind of a message this year, how then are we going to flip around as we move forward and say, it wasn't that big of a deal. You don't even have to wear a mask, but now we want you all to get vaccinated because it's so serious? As a public health matter, I think that's going to be a difficult thing to sell. And I think we have to, we have to be a little bit more reasoned and consider the beginning of our country and the risks, for instance, that George Washington had in mind. You know, how is he going to lead? I have a number of studies which very much show that the board did the right thing last year, very much so, and I greatly compliment the board. The science is much more convincing now than it was then of the effectiveness of the public health measures that the board and the superintendent took. And I think we have to continue those in some degree. I think the...
Sir, your time's up.
Okay.
Thank you.
I, again, I do offer to continue to be a resource. I know some members had some things I was discussing with them, and I have researched them more, and I can provide a lot more information on this topic, so I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. And I know this is a current item that the superintendent and the health staff here are working on.
Yes.
And you want to have any comments, sir?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. We, we are currently working on this situation. Received some information from the Health Department earlier this week, and it was information that we had solicited, and we will be meeting tomorrow to vet this out further and to really try to come up with the best, best steps that are available for this school year coming up. So, our goal is early next week, but the one thing we do want to do is when we come up with some guidelines that they're, they're going to be the right guidelines and good for our kids and our staff and our schools.
Yeah, I think it's most important that you understand that, number one, our main concern is the safety of the students and the safety of the employees, and that we're going to do everything we can to keep this. It's easy to say, do this, but it's not always popular. And so, we are, I think, all of us in agreement that we will follow the directions the superintendent and the Health Department comes up with, and then we will try to work to enforce those and make people understand, we do these things because we are concerned about safety, just like approving us a SRO contract. That's safety, this is safety, too. So, thank you very much, sir. Appreciate it. Anything else, Mr. Superintendent?
I do not have anything else, Mr. Chairman.
Anything else from the members of the board?
Yesterday, the news media, Channel 3, had statements from both Santa Rosa and Ocaloosa County about proposed plans for COVID mitigation, and I'm hoping that we'll have something then prior to students coming on campus.
I think that's...
Yes, that is, the goal is, I'd hoped for earlier this next coming week is the goal. And I've been in communication with those two superintendents as well.
Thank you, sir.
One of the things that, just to clarify, one of the things that was a little different is we were still gathering information from the Health Department, so that was, that was a factor in the timeline.
We appreciate their efforts, but it seems like things are changing, and so, we just have to be prepared and, so, yes, yes, ma'am?
I just want to say thank you to Martha Hannah and the staff for keeping up our dashboard because I think where others have taken it down to not be as transparent, we are trying to be transparent, trying to communicate about the positivity rate in our community, and I think that's valuable information for parents. And I hope that we can get that information out to our staff as quickly as possible because I know that as I've visited schools, you know, there are those cases out there that are already impacting those teachers coming back. So, and I appreciate the fact that we are going to continue with our sanitation and our hand washing and all of those things because even without COVID, it's a good step to keep our kids less sick, so.
Very true. Anything else, sir?
Superintendent, want to give an update on the plane crash at Blue Angel, on what happened, just so the public know?
Yeah, so there was a plane crash at Blue Angel in the parking lot. Did not make contact with the building, but certainly was close. Thoughts and prayers go for the people who were on the plane. Our understanding is all three are at the hospital. One of them was a Blue Angels teacher and spouse and then a minor. So, please lift your thoughts and prayers to the family. Remarkable job by our school leadership team who was there. Principal provided really rather incredible heroic assistance there, helping the people in the plane. And we're just very thankful that our principal was there to provide incredible assistance, really made a difference there. And thank the entire staff at that school for all of their support, and we, again, wish the people in the, who were in the plane, the very best and fortunate to have great medical care in our community to assist them.
Yes, thank you very much. Anything else? If not, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much.